Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
We'll spend away for years. We don't know. It's gotta be something to make it look just a little better.
Yeah, but maybe we can just.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Do you mind it now? No, you said, oh, good.
That metal case is pretty distinctive.
Oh Debbie, are you doing okay?
Be hard to misplace that.
Yeah.
Case is pretty distinct.
Some procedures on Tuesday, so hopefully that will fix.
Well hello, you look like I feel.
And just hope for the record, really feels really good.
Yeah.
Hopefully you don't feel this bad.
Having trouble with my hip again.
Oh, the one they fixed?
No, the other one.
Oh, well, of course.
Fixed one and then it ruins the other one.
Yeah. But when I had my other one done, all of a sudden I walked even again. So it was, I felt like.
So you didn't limp anymore? I think I'm, well, I'm definitely walking with a limp.
I didn't think I was.
Going upstairs is really hard.
Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and get started with our work meeting and hopefully Bryce and Lisa will come. I said I need to leave my phone out because last time I received a message from Lisa and she couldn't get it, but I didn't see it because it was in my purse. So I appreciate you all coming tonight. I have a whole list of stuff. This is all work meeting stuff. So let's hope we can get through it. I've actually made tabs. So I thought we could just go through agenda items and I have a few other things besides that, even with that. So one of the first things on the agenda, well, we'll have the presentation that Tager Soffler will be here from J to B. And so he'll come and cover that. We'll be good. I had Jared, because tonight we're coming back, Alan Harris says, to talk about that little sliver of land that they would like to purchase. And so I asked Jared if he would just kind of make us a few notes that I thought we might want to just talk about for a minute here in work meeting. Of things that we would probably want to make sure that when, like if we approve this, which that will certainly be your vote, but some things we might. Hello Bryce, we might want to consider when we do that. So Bryce, I was just mentioning, this is on that little sliver of land. Jared kind of went through and did this memo that he said, he thought there's some things that we should consider. And so if you do go ahead and approve to do that, and I'll, you know, maybe just give you a minute to look through this real quick. And then maybe we can see if we have any concerns or.
And this does go on the, again, it lines up with the road.
Lines up with the road.
So it'd be on the north side of that house?
Yes, yes, on the north side.
North side of our.
Of our building.
Of our vacuum.
Yes.
And then the south side of the house.
Yep, so Morgan has the map pulled up there for us. But one thing that Jared said, he wanted to make sure, we, he just didn't want it to get approved without us saying to them, okay, you know, we will approve this. And I made a copy for them that we could give to them as well, if you feel like this is something that we should do. But they should, you know, of course they should pay us and like he said, it would be an unbiased to do an appraisal. He said usually like on fifty five hundred west, they have someone that comes in and, you know, we'd have to pay the people if we were taking a little bit of their frontage. But we want to make sure too, if they have to relocate anything, as far as, and he, you know, mentioned the different things in here. That they would be responsible then for taking care of all of that. So this shouldn't be any expense for us to have to relocate any, if there are any electrical lines or anything, you know, he mentioned. Any expenses, engineering designs, sewer, any of that. So that was just his.
Will the actual road go over this property or is it just the right of way? Do we know?
So the road will actually go over the property. But then, like you said, they deed it back to us.
It will be dedicated, but it's probably more difficult if it's right in the middle of the road to try to get into those. Whatever might be buried there, utilities, if it's under the road than if it's on the side.
How much distance from the south part of the road to our sewer, to the pump station? Doesn't look like it's very far.
It had to at least be. Yes.
And there's enough setback and everything.
So that's the question, is there enough setback? If there's not, then you'd have to think about the fact that he's going to dedicate it back to the city and whether that might allow a variance.
There are only fifteen feet.
It's fifteen feet, five inches, it looks like, and I think the side property line is ten feet.
Then they're okay.
Yeah, I think they said when they did that, it gave it, that it did give enough feet for that.
I guess my whole thought process is even though they didn't deed it back to us, it's gonna have traffic on it all the time. Like it's a road, it's, it's not like we're gonna use that property ever again.
No.
It's got, it's a road.
So you probably gotta move all those utilities somewhere.
Yeah, that, that's what they said. They would have to move the utilities. There's a nice final fence that goes along that side. The fence would need to be moved. I know one time they had mentioned about even having access to get to it. So I think somewhere maybe even along that road where the fences, you know, or maybe even where it bends, they're going to want to have some kind of an access even to be able to. So we could get probably to all sides, maybe even of the building. Cause he didn't mention that in here, but I remember them talking about it one time. Does that sound familiar at all?
So it's as.
Not shared.
It's as far north as it can go, like DeZong's property, Roy's house.
And they said they would be moving that one share.
Well, can things like this, this might be a question for you. You know, there's obviously conditions and this is a list of them, but can those conditions be kind of open ended? Because we, we don't know everything that they may run into.
Yeah, I presume we'll have to put an agreement together and we'll just have to put that if other things come up that require some expense, that they'll have to defray that expense.
That's definitely not the scale either. You look across the street on the west side, fifty seven hundred south is way narrower than the one that's drawn in there.
Looks like it, doesn't it?
Well, it looks like the center line lines up. You know, can you see where the dotted line is for the center? Those look like they line up maybe.
Unless that's including the entire right of way. Probably, that's why I was, that's not the actual street, the whole right of way.
Yeah, that, that's what Jared said also. Well, and he also mentioned in here, you know, read about having our legal counsel prepare an agreement. So we would have to do that, but I think he just said, you know, any in our project, infrastructure expenses. So I think we need to make sure, if you decide to vote on this, you know, affirmatively, that in our motion, it says that they will incur any or all expenses. Which is his very last sentence, his part on the second page. I don't, I don't think Jared or Darren or any of them felt like it would be a concern doing this. The concern was they just need to be aware that they're paying for all the expenses.
If, if you didn't do this, what are his options? What does he do? Looks like he's gonna have to take out those buildings.
Well, and the one's a house where they live, so, yeah.
There's nothing else they can do because it UDOT requires it to be squared up or.
In that respect, it's a good thing. I mean, if we can hold UDOT's feet to the fire, if they're requiring this, then it'll, should be required everywhere, you know?
Forty two hundred south is the one that comes to mind.
Exactly, correct.
But those of us that now are trying to come down, is it forty five hundred? I think I mentioned this before, Davis County, you jog that little bit by Peak's Corner. That's very difficult now with Davis Corridor. So I understand why we don't want to, I understand why we want to line up our roads. And Jared said when they put in the new part of that, they're going to fix that, which would be good because it's getting very, certain times of the day, very difficult to get across there. Well, any questions, any other discussion you think we need to have on this before they present it in our meeting? And like I said, I made it, Chris, we didn't have this to put in the packet, that I thought this would be for you to discuss and see. And then, you know, if you vote on this, then we can certainly give a copy of this to Alan or to whoever. Okay, okay, so if that's.
Morgan, you figured out the notice on it, I guess?
Yeah. Yes, yes, so it will be a public hearing, so we will, you know, move from our regular meeting to public hearing and then back. Okay, so another next thing on our agenda then, well, there is on the Fry Guy food truck. He is at a Christmas party tonight and he said, what time do you think I need to be back in order to do this? And I told him I would for sure be back by seven thirty, but I told him if by chance he's not, if we'd be willing to then move him down. A bit down rather than, but he said he'd be back and I don't even know what his, he has a name. What is it, is his name? I shouldn't refer to him as the Fry Guy. Jordensen?
Chris.
Chris Jordensen, okay. But he said he had his wife's work party at six and I said if you could be back at seven thirty, just in case if he can't, then we'll need to make a motion and move that down. Okay, so on the senior lunch, I talked to a couple of people and found out a little more information. So Weaver Human Services are planning on having four senior centers. With the condition that Roy's would be kept open if they get support from other cities. So that is there because they said Washington Terrace has South Ogden support, North Ogden has Pleasant View support. Ogden City is kind of a standalone because they're so large. So I ended up, I, cause I don't think I've actually quoted this before, but this is what Mayor Dandoyd said. One of the key requirements they are looking for from each of the four existing centers is some level of financial collaboration. From neighboring cities to help finance staff to maintain the centers. So I got a message back from Mayor Dandoyd and they voted at their city council meeting to approve the four thousand. West Haven had their meeting last night and I haven't heard their vote, but I, I think that they probably did approve it with an interlocal agreement. That's what they said they thought then we should do if we approve this, is have an interlocal agreement with the Roy Center. That we are supporting them in the amount of four thousand dollars because we do have our seniors that are attending that. So again, that would be the four thousand then, if we, if you decide to approve that. And then also it was the nineteen hundred and eighty five, if I remember right, for the. Our lunch, nineteen hundred and eighty dollars. For a total of five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars that would be towards the seniors.
So Roy, West Haven, Hooper, anyone else?
Roy, West Haven and Hooper. So Roy already puts in eighty thousand, but they need an additional twelve thousand for the staff. And he's, and then he went on to say that if they didn't get that, then, and it's no longer a center, then they would just maybe lease that, the space out to something else or.
So it's make or break over twelve thousand dollars?
It, they made it, they made it sound like it.
That's fishy to me.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I'd, I'd like to see all this in writing so that we know just what we're approving because it seems like every time we've talked about it, it's been, it's been different.
Yeah.
And so.
So this is, this is what it is. It's the four thousand. And then if you vote for that, then we, I would have redo an interlocal agreement. West Haven said they could send us a copy of their, of their interlocal agreement they're doing, if we want to do something similar.
Probably ought to be one for all, all three groups, I don't, all three sign the same agreement.
Yeah.
So if West Haven started, I think Roy will put it together.
Okay. Yeah.
Since they're the ones that are running the thing.
Yeah, yeah, he just said from the list, you can see you have residents who use senior centers, particularly the Roy, North Island way. But he just said, North Island, just like I told you, North Island, Washington have received financial commitments from neighboring Weaver Human Services. Was hoping that Hooper and West Haven would do the same for the Roy Senior Center.
So does Roy get money from Weaver County then?
They, they have in the past.
Are they getting it this year then?
This year they're, they're getting some, not their full amount. So when we went to that meeting, I think they were getting about ninety six thousand. They were getting one of the most amounts. So in the future then, they would get hopefully still the eighty thousand, but then they have to make up the additional twelve thousand. Because they, they had this whole big breakdown that if they did four, they would each get so much, if they got, did three, they would each get so much. So I think they decided on they will do four, but they're the twelve thousand dollars short then, and that's what, where we would be participating to make up that difference.
So for, Roy would choose four as well?
Yes, and they already approved. His, his last message said that the Roy City Council approved it to afford the four thousand additional.
I don't want to be a Grinch, but maybe they oughta make their, make their program fit the budget, you know?
I mean, it's more, it's ninety percent their citizens that are going to it, you know, that's what.
I know we have some go up there too, but.
But the vast majority.
But we, you and I have all already prepaid this through our taxes to Weaver County in some form or fashion.
Most of this is actually paid for with grants, like Weaver County contributes, it's the, it has an acronym.
But it still comes from, anything that comes from the government is taxed.
It's taxed, absolutely.
So it's, it comes from.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's just a thought. I mean, four thousands aren't gonna kill us, but.
It's the principle.
It's the principle, like, kinda getting bullied a little bit.
I feel like it, especially when we're still contributing our own program. You know, we got what, eight or ten people coming here every other Thursday and then we got to fund that one because just in case we have people going up there.
Yeah, it says we have about twelve to fifteen coming now.
Coming here.
Coming here, but see, we have, it shows, like Hooper, we have nineteen that are going, no, excuse me, I took golden hours. We have twenty eight that are going to Roy. So we actually have more of our residents that are going to Roy that are coming here.
All going to.
Yeah, that's what we said.
Come back to her. It'd be fun to know where those twenty eight are.
And they said those are registered. She sent me a thing and said, those are people that have signed up. So whether they have those twenty eight go every single time, like they maybe aren't there every time, but they have twenty eight that are registered from Hooper that go.
So they could have registered and they could have passed away and still be on their list?
Well, no, because I think it would be, it's like a monthly thing. They might not go every week.
A monthly, sign up, okay.
They can go every day.
But they can go every day.
Right.
It's open Monday, Friday.
I feel like with what we spend our money on, everything else, I feel like we should give the four thousand.
That's something we have to agree upon on an annual basis?
An annual basis, yes. So once we do this, we'll have to amend the budget and then from every year, we'll be putting four thousand in. Except for, there's always a chance, we could talk to our state and say, hey, you need to give more money, or the federal needs to give more money. Because of its, and I, I'm only basing this on what I know because I've helped with grants for the coalition. Like the coalition that the Weaver Human Services says will give you five thousand, then the counties or the states says, well, if you get five thousand, we'll match that money. And then, so I don't, I don't know that it could be a forever thing. Maybe there would be other grants. I know all the time they're writing, but this would be for next year to keep the Roy Center open.
So technically, we would have to amend the budget for a total of six thousand dollars.
Yes, yes, for the four thousand and the nineteen eighty. And, and there's probably money in the budget under other areas. I don't, I'm sure there probably is money there, but yes, we need to amend the budget.
Do we have any amount of this already slated in the budget? So we don't have anything for.
Because so far, when the seniors, when they were doing that, it was all paid for by Weaver Human Services and the people were contributing their four dollars a month. But that's by donation only, so if they don't want to pay, they don't, they don't have to. They're not going to turn away anybody if they don't give their four dollars.
So we, we could be paying as much as fifteen for each person that comes here?
Well, yeah, I, I haven't seen anybody not pay, but the Chris and Blair that have been doing this said, if ever we ran short, they would go out and try to get more donations. Okay, what are we thinking about that? Is that something in all that will come up again, again for the vote? Okay, so that brings up to the next thing, which I want to talk about, with emergency preparedness. I am a hundred percent on board with emergency preparedness. I was a member of the CERT team, taught this in health for a long time. Again, though, going back to budget. So I went through, so currently, from what I could see, and Bryce, correct me if I'm wrong. We show ninety six hundred dollars under emergency preparedness in the budget. Does that sound right? I tried to find it right before.
That number was just put in there by.
Probably Teresa.
Teresa just put it in, because we didn't know.
We didn't know.
But the, but the percentage was always consistent, five percent. So the ninety six was just kind of.
A number, a placeholder.
Yes.
So I, so I went through and added up, so far, we haven't received what we thought we were going to receive from the utility tax. That doesn't mean we won't. And I was going to talk to Kami more about this, but her father-in-law passed away and so she was only here for just a short time to hurry and sign some things. So, so the very best that I could do is I went to last year's, it was our June thirtieth of twenty twenty four, and that was for twelve months. So we, we hadn't been receiving the utility tax for that whole entire time, but part of that time. And in that period of time, we'd received two hundred and eighty five thousand out of what we thought would be the four hundred and eighty. But again, we didn't start it for the full year, so that's probably not really accurate.
So that's, that's ending June thirtieth, right?
June thirtieth, yes. So, so that was for a full year. But, but it, but it's hard because.
Not a full year, twelve months.
Yeah, because we didn't start until October, yeah.
Yes, that's my point. So that was for twelve months, but not a full twelve months of the utility tax. And then this time, so this was only going until October, and so this was only, again, comparing from July to the end of October. And so that's not a full twelve months either, and that was a hundred and sixty five thousand. So I, and I have the exact numbers. They're not exactly, it's like hundred sixty five, seven ninety four, twenty nine. Anyway, when I added up those two numbers, I came to four hundred and fifty one thousand, but we haven't really had a full year of being able to report yet. We have, but they haven't been on a fiscal year, if that makes any sense, and it probably doesn't.
It's always just, just figure twelve months.
Twelve months.
Whether you're, whether you're looking at two different fiscal years to come up with twelve months.
But we, yes, but it's hard because we haven't had a full fiscal year to evaluate this.
When did you start it?
Last October.
Last October.
So it's been a year.
It's been a year, one month.
So we haven't got our check yet.
Kind of right in line with the.
Well, yeah, in our budget, it says four eighty. And this is one thing that Kami has said to me a few times, just give me a year with the budget and we, let's get things a little more in check. Whatever you decide to vote on this tonight is certainly up to you. My thoughts, we're thinking though, maybe we should leave the ninety six hundred until we start evaluating the budget and she can really go through and evaluate this. Then next year, I would feel more comfortable saying, we have an extra five percent. Or maybe we don't have quite five, but maybe we always, every year Bryce, say twelve thousand or fifteen thousand. So we know there's always a set amount going in, rather than it even being based on percentage. Because so far, we don't really know what that is yet.
Well, it's, I mean, these numbers are arbitrary to what we voted on. A percentage is totally different than an amount. So if you get ten dollars, you take five percent and put it away. So I'm, I'm not in favor of doing what you're proposing. I think we all agreed on five percent. This is new money. And this fund, it's not just for specific things. It's pretty broad, the way we described it in our minutes. It's pretty broad. So we were all for this and so someday, someone's gonna be glad we did it.
Oh, for sure.
So, so I'm not in favor of what you're proposing. I think we ought to go retroactive and put that money away. Cause we were all, we all voted on this utility fund and I know you were opposed of it. In your campaign, you were opposed of it.
Yes.
So I think you ought to respect what we did as a body and leave the five percent alone and let's vote on it tonight. If, if I get denied, that's, that's fine. I'll respect the council's decision. But to kind of back up and change the direction we set, I'm, I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah, oh, I, I appreciate that. My thinking was just, would it be more consistent and you would end up with more money in your fund if we set an amount?
No.
Rather than five percent.
I, I think, I think the thing that we did the five percent with is that, is that it was taking money that we didn't have initially.
It's new money. You're not gonna miss it.
So we just thought five percent, you know, it's, it will be different, but, yeah.
And that tax will change every, it won't be the same every year. It's not a set amount.
Right, but we, we kind of got a ballpark figure of what it would be and that was something that.
And that came from utilities, that comes from the gas company and the electric company.
The gas gave us much, but the electric didn't.
Which was the four eighty? Is that what the setup?
That, that's what it's estimated is four eighty.
So if we do five percent, that's twenty four thousand dollars. So I have two questions. What are we using that money for, number one?
Right.
That's the thing, yeah.
It's not earmarked.
At the end of the fiscal year, does it roll over or does it go into the, the black hole like all our other budget items do?
Sure.
Right.
Well, it's, it's, so what I envisioned, what we talked about, we'll have to look at the minutes. So there's some things that Dave Harris is the emergency partner, he needs, you know, that Weaver County wants us to get a cash box, you know, which is supplies and things. There's stuff that we need to do. We talked about paying for people's CERT certification to be CERT. And it never hurts to have money in, in a, in an emergency fund for, say, if we have a road blow up or whatever, it sinks. You know, this isn't so restricted that we couldn't pull from that. So that's, that's the whole purpose of that. So it's pretty broad when Teresa kind of geared, or helped steer us in that direction. She says, yeah, you just keep it broad and you don't have to earmark it for specific things. But emergency can be a lot of different things.
Does that money?
I don't know. I don't see why it couldn't.
I think that, I think that was the plan originally.
Yeah.
We, we would want it to.
Yeah.
We would want it to roll over, so you're building up a fund.
Right.
Because if not, we don't want it to just go into the general fund every year.
No.
We want it to be earmarked then for that fund, so every year, and I, I'm not against it. It was voted on, it was already done, even if I didn't agree at the time, it's here and I really, I am all for emergency preparedness. My thinking was maybe leave it alone this year and make sure we have it in there for next year. Cause well, and again, we'll amend the budget for this, which is fine too, but then she'll have to find, because it, because Teresa didn't put enough in for that.
Well, that's kind of, because we were kind of shooting at a moving target anyway.
Yeah.
So my question is, where's that money going and has any of it been spent? So if it has or hasn't then.
I don't think any's been spent.
Then it should be, then it, there's no reason why we shouldn't just go retroactive like we talked about and put it in the emergency fund instead of starting over.
But in the budget, when Teresa did it, she only put ninety five hundred and she didn't put, how much did you say your five percent would be of the twenty, of the four?
The reason why she put it ninety six hundred, like I, like I said, it was a moving target. We didn't know. Now we've done a whole year. We kind of know what we're gonna get.
So the revenue was four hundred something thousand?
So you were thinking twenty four thousand is what you were, is that approximately what you were wanting?
Depending upon what the utility guys told us, they said, plan on, they gave us pretty, pretty solid numbers.
Yeah.
And now they're looking on paper, they're, they're pretty accurate. They're pretty close.
But again, that's what I'm seeing. So if you, even if we take this, four hundred and fifty one thousand, it's, that I can add up. But that's going from like twelve months previous and then so far this many months.
Well, even, even, I would be okay just doing it in July one.
That money is there, whether it came from one fiscal part or another.
But Bryce, if we only do it from July one, there's only a hundred and sixty five thousand, seven hundred and ninety four, so you, you probably want to go back.
Well, we can, we can go back. That's what, I mean, because you wanted to start next year.
Well, well, I, I think.
So that's, that's another nine months.
The one hundred and sixty five, seven ninety four, and we times that by the five percent, that's less than we have in there. So, so we don't, we need to, that's why it's hard.
That's not twelve months.
And I, and like you, like you said, that number was just a placeholder. That's how you described it. We didn't know.
Yes.
We didn't know what it was going to be.
No.
But, but what we did approve was five percent of what came in.
Yes.
So whatever that ends up being. So whatever that ends up being, whether Teresa missed the mark a little bit, that, I think that's irrelevant to what.
Yeah, but, but because she only put that mu- much in, we still have to amend the budget.
So we can amend it on that line item.
Yeah, so we have to amend the budget, and we'll still have to come up with money from somewhere else to fill that in, because she didn't put more than that in there.
Where is, where is that money now?
Well, it should be there, if we haven't spent it. It should be there somewhere.
It's, it, it's, and it is somewhere, but it's not earmarked, like, like in order to do a budget and amend it, then we have to go through and say, okay, well, there, our budget says there's ninety-six hundred, but by the time of the year, if we get through and we say, oh, you should have twenty-four thousand, then somehow, we have to go from somewhere in her budget. That's what Kami's saying. Give her a year to go through our budget and see where the money's put, because she's relying completely on Teresa's budget, on what she did. So, so Kami's saying, right today, she doesn't know where we will come up with that other fourteen thousand, from somewhere else to put for that.
But, but you're making it sound like that that was like har- hard money, or wh- wherever you want. I don't know sometimes the accounting terms. But a budget is not always, and I know I got criticized by saying, a budget isn't always real money. It's not money that just sits there, but it is a, it's a plan.
It is.
So what was approved was five percent of the utility funds that come in. Now, if we have to amend it and say, well, that doesn't equal what Teresa put in there, then we, we put in
Yes.
what is, what is actual money that is in, and that, Bryce, I think that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm saying. It has to go from somewhere out. That's all I'm saying. We just have to realize we're gonna amend the budget, and money will come from, because somewhere, what they do is, so we'll make this simple. They take a hundred dollars, and they go through and subtract everything out, and by the time you're done, you have zero money. So if we want to be, in a budget.
You're, you're talking a budget.
Talking budget. So in one of those categories then, if there's like a hundred dollars, and she only equated you to have nine dollars, but now you want twenty dollars, we, we will just have to move some of that money somewhere else, which is fine, and we can do. I'm, I'm not saying we can't. I'm just saying we be aware then that we're amending the budget, so at the end of the year, we will do that.
So where, where is, okay, I'm stupid.
No, you're not.
You're not. No, you're not.
Where is, where is this money sitting?
Yeah, where is the, where, there's actual money there. That's what we're talking about. There's actual money.
Exactly. Well, not yet. Like you said, it's just a budget.
Well, no, on the utility funds, it's been, some of that's been turned in.
The utility, those checks have come in, so where.
So if you remember going through the budget, and I don't know how many of you like reviewed, you know, we got this, she just already gave this to us in October. They account for money. Some of it goes into general fund, some of it's capital projects. They go through, and then at the end of the year, they say, oh, there was this leftover money, it'll go into general, um, fund. Or this leftover money you could put in capital projects. It, it's not saying the money's not there. It's just with the budget, when you amend it, you have to allocate it somewhere.
Right.
So somewhere, when she amends the budget, she will just amend it, and if there was money from general fund, now there'll be less in general fund, and it'll say it's in your.
So in that scenario, this money is being spent?
No.
Well, it's going into different, something goes into.
I don't, I don't, that's, that's what Kami has said. Teresa did the budget. Now she's trying to adjust everything based on that budget. But Kami said, give me a year. So come January, she said, give me time, we'll start going through this. Because she said some things, and she brought this up last time, like there was money that shows this sewer and stormwater account. But she said, okay, really though, part of that sewer money really belonged in stormwater. She took that money out to put it where it belongs. Now we really don't ha- quite have enough to cover our sewer. So, she said, let me go through this one time, and just make sure where everything is, because she said, I'm facing this solely on someone else that she doesn't know. So no, I, I'm not saying there won't be the money there. I'm just saying, when you make the motion tonight then, just realizing, come probably the end of June, we'll be amending the budget, and somewhere then, they'll have to, either that'll come back out of the general fund, or maybe out of capital projects. I'm not saying the money's all been spent, because you looked through this and it hasn't, but that probably makes some sense.
Well, what, what makes sense to me is, we've collected so much money on the utility.
Is it that what it's called?
Uh, the, the energy tax. What we approved was five percent of that.
Well, it, well, it was discussed. That's what we're approving tonight. It never was motioned to do five percent.
Bryce, did we not motion?
You, you didn't, and I brought those in the last time.
I guess we, I guess we didn't, because she went back and checked.
Yeah, I went back through the minutes to find it.
So we'll go ahead and motion tonight, and whatever decides.
So if you want a motion, because, because as of right today, there would be five percent in. And then we can see from now till the end of June how much more there is, so whatever, I'm, that was just my suggestion, is maybe we give Kami a year, she'll see. And then if we, if there is, then if you want more, or there's less, or, um, I mean, Jared made it, in which we, we don't have time to really get into budgets. But, but he made it Friday, right before he left tonight, because I, we've been talking a lot about budget, and come January, we're gonna start on the budget. And he said, let me just give you one real quick example here. He said, you used to be able to buy a battery for a truck, and it was like a hundred dollars. He said, so, because he was signing, we were signing invoices tonight, and, uh, for our accounts payable. And he said, we had to get a new battery for this truck, and it was like two-hundred and something dollars.
Where's his Shell bat?
Um, national battery.
Yeah, Costco's.
And then there was a battery that they had just purchased for the, the pump station. It was three-hundred and something dollars. And he said, do we say we're not getting a pump for the pump station? No. But, but the whole point with all this budget is, which they brought up, and we'll talk about budget next time, when we have more time. But if we are not doing something to increase our income, expenses keep going up, and how are we covering them? And that's what Kami said, let us.
Got to spend wisely too, though.
Yes, we do.
We do.
Vendor that comes to your door, you have to, you have to go buy or receive this, you know?
Well, I, I've always shopped at National Battery myself, and I felt pretty confident in them, and I don't know. But anyway, so whatever you want to do with this tonight, I was just giving you the numbers. Whatever, because again, you vote what you think, and I just told you, Kami's recommendation is just give her, tell her to kind of figure this out, and then we'll kind of see from there. Okay. I have a few other things, so let's move on, or we won't have time to talk about all this stuff. So, all of this then is on the budget. Okay. So, um, we're getting a new website. We found someone that's really reasonable. She would like a picture of each of you, and a sentence of what your favorite thing about Hooper is. So, as soon as you could do that.
Don't have to say it.
A picture. Does everyone have a picture?
I don't.
I mean, I know you said your mom was a photographer. Maybe we could even arrange a time when people come, or phones take really good pictures. But that's what we would like from you. A webs, you know, a, a picture of you, and, and one sentence of what your favorite thing about Hooper is. Okay. Okay, um, so I sent the copy of this to Brandon, and you know, we talked last time about the problem with the dogs in the house. And he has asked Dale, if you'd be willing just to write like a statement, or get Brandon the information, uh, because you said you told Scott no, no animals.
There's no question about when we, uh, he, he, you know, went through the house, that we, we did not want pets in the house. My concern is, what did the contract say that we signed? See, I've never, I never saw the contract. You know, none of that was ever.
Then he sent a contract that Brandon reviewed, but the contract didn't include any of this. We, we never saw any of this. The contract was kind of a general contract, um, and we'd made changes, like the house wasn't owned by Morgan. You probably saw that as well. You know, if they had additional legal fees.
It was a standard contract, and if there were other things that should have been in there, no one told us.
It was, it, it, none of this was in there. First time we saw this, and Morgan had asked and asked, and he never gave this to us.
We didn't know, we didn't know what the contract said initially.
Well, it, it wasn't this. The, the very first time I saw this.
What is this?
That's the rental agreement.
This is the rental agreement.
Management and the renter.
So the contract didn't say anything about, um, I mean, this was new, and he gave this to us, and Morgan gave it to me, I think it was, well, it was right before our last meeting.
Scott Larson, KDC?
Scott Larson sent this to Morgan. And she had asked and asked. We finally got this, and this is the rental agreement, and in here, there is an addendum that said, uh, about they have these two dogs. And our insurance agent, you know, suggests, I already mentioned to you what kind of dogs they were, he said not to, because we don't want anybody to feel like we're prejudiced against a certain breed of animal. Anyway, Brandon said, Dale, if you'll just write something down, you definitely told, you know, Scott, which I know you did, no animals, then he will see what he can do. Because we never saw this.
Are those house dogs, or just dogs they have out in the yard?
At, in the house. And they're two large dogs.
So what does the addendum say?
The addendum goes on to say, it's a pet lease addendum, and it goes through and says about, um, he didn't fill in about how many pounds that they've written on at the bottom, and I pass this around. They've written on the bottom, the dogs and the weights. But we had never saw this, and you hadn't saw this, and neither had Brandon, because we were never given this. Okay, that's one concern. Another concern is, they are parking their trucks in the field behind their house, which is the part that we are using for the rodeo grounds. And Jared said he was down there today, and they were parked back there. So, this is something, we can't vote on anything in work meeting, but for you to be thinking about, and we could talk about next time, is, do we need to get a fence up between where the back of the house is, as much yard as we're going to have them have? And Jared said he would talk to Alan Spalding about possibly putting a clear cross that back that puts the separation between that along the east side. So I'm talking from west to east along the back, from north to south along the east. So, it's a separation between where their yard is and where we will be parking horse trailers.
Not necessarily a boundary.
Not a boundary, correct.
Just a separation.
A separation fence. But then that would be an expense the city would have to pay. But it's something we might want to do, because if not, we don't necessarily want them feeling like that whole area behind their house is theirs to use, because it isn't.
Right.
But anyway, Dale, and if you want to call Brandon, he just said if you could get something to him, then he will look and see legally now what we can do. If we told them no dogs, and they let dogs, then we should be able to do something about that. Okay. Okay, the next thing then, is this ethics pledge that we were going to try to have done by tonight, and I don't know that anyone does yet, so maybe if we could have that done by our next meeting, if that's.
Here's the, if, if you do have things that, that are interacting with the city, this is the little statement that you fill out. If you don't, then of course you wouldn't have moved.
I don't think I do.
I've got a question for Reed. Is this, uh, is this the same one? Is this specific to Hooper? And if it is, why, is there a reason why we don't use the state of Utah's ethics?
No, it's, well, it, it includes both. If you look at the material behind there, it gives you first the state law, and then it gives you the Hooper law as well. The Hooper one is only one page or two pages. The state law is a number of pages.
One question I had, which I didn't know, it talks in here about a municipal ethics commission. Is that something we want to do?
That's, that's something brand new that, uh, that they passed in the most recent legislation. Uh, and keep in mind, as I said before, uh, there'll be a new form coming out in January, uh, so you're gonna be asked to do a little bit more even then. But I, and the, the reporters' association is creating that, I think, uh, and they'll have that to you hopefully in the next few weeks, so that we can look at that. This is a stopgap between now and then.
Okay. We don't have a notary currently here.
Oh, you don't have a notary?
Notary. So that was the thing why I said tonight, if we could bring it next time, because everyone will need to get this signed and have it notarized.
Can I just get it notarized and bring it, or?
Oh, sure.
My grandson's a notary.
Yes, yes. Would, and should we all, would everybody be okay with signing and having it to us next week? Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay, then let's.
You can have it notarized anywhere.
Yeah, he, he's a notary and lives with me, so.
Well, even if.
Why don't you bring him to the meeting, and he can notarize everywhere?
He works nights, unfortunately.
Reed, do you want it sooner than next meeting, or have him bring it to the office next week?
Well, I, it's, it's up to you. It's, uh, as I say, you're gonna have to do a new one next year anyway. If you do it next week, next meeting, they're only two weeks before the end of the year. So I'd say do it as, as soon as you can, and turn it in.
So could everybody have this notarized next week, both of these forms?
Just, just do it and bring it in as soon as you can.
Yep, and just bring it in and sign next week.
This, this other one, what was it for?
The one I just handed out?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, the, 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 the first one, just acknowledges that you flicked over the material, and you understand. The second one, uh, the state law says that if you have interactions with the business, if they're regulating work that you do, you have to disclose that specifically, and so that's what the second one would do. You don't have, you don't, you just don't have to worry about that.
I'm retired.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about that. I would guess probably none of you have that, but.
Okay, um, okay, next thing. So last time, Kami had brought up about the ARPA funds, and the question was brought up about, it was an amount of eighty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. The question was brought up, were these funds that had already been spent, what were they being spent on? So I asked Jared, and he gave me this, and this is a, a document that he had prepared, April sixth, twenty-twenty-two, that went to the mayor and city council, that it was approved of where to spend these funds. And this eighty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars is for a vacuum station force main manhole rehab. And it's the exact ma- amount that's in our, um, budget. And Kami said we didn't necessarily have to vote on this. She just needed to have you say, fine, that's where that ARPA money was being spent.
Was that on fifty-five hundred west? Is that where that is?
Yes. But he, but when I asked Jared, he said, well, okay, they, they already approved this. He said, so what's the question? So, are, are we okay with this? And I can tell Kami to go ahead and ask, to use that additional eighty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars for ARPA. Anybody have any questions, concerns about this manhole rehab? Jared said, it is about to the point of collapsing. He said it is, um, cement, but you could actually take a, a pan and poke right through it, it is so brittle. And if at any time that collapses and falls in, we're in serious problems.
Okay.
So any questions? Everybody okay with that?
So we can just go, sorry, have they already had a prefab? Do we just go pick it up?
Okay, Jared, Jared said, a little bit of concern about this is, somehow, they're going to have to figure out a way to t- turn off the sewer, have it ready to go, they can replace it. They haven't a hundred percent figured that out. It's the North Station Manhole Replacement, Lowen Town Manhole Rehabilitation. Anyway, it's all on there, so.
So this was two years ago?
Two years ago, you approved it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, two years ago, and that was approved April sixth. This was the MAMO request. I don't, I don't know for sure what day it was approved.
So it's not that pressing of an issue, if we're going on two years.
Well, it's getting worse and worse all the time, he said, and it has to be fixed. But I think.
Well, you have a limit of time you have to spend the ARPA funds, I think, because they, you know, it's coming up.
Yes, like December thirty-first. That's why she wanted to know this. Okay.
I, I guess the ques- the reason why we've been thinking we had it to spend was because it's, we'd been asked and asked and asked about it when we already took care of it two years ago.
And Kami has.
Is this, was this, was this the balance of ARPA funds, or was this already taken out of the ARPA funds, and then the balance we were hoping would be on fifty-nine hundred west?
So, so, so last time when Kami was here, there were two separate ARPA funds. This ARPA funds was already cap, um, categorized as the sewer. Then there was that other hundred-and-sixty-five that we had never categorized. That's the.
So that's still in the, okay.
So this is one that's, it will go for sewer.
This one makes sure we're tapping into that.
No.
Okay.
No. And they have, they are setting up a meeting to meet with that, Justin, to review all of that. Okay. Um, the LRB Economic Impact Study is not quite done. We were hoping it would be done so it could be reviewed at next week's Planning Commission meeting, but it is not. And they said they will come and present it, and so if it is done, I want to propose that we on the nineteenth have them come, because they will come present it, and they can present it at a city council meeting, and invite Planning Commission to come. So everybody would be there to hear their results. So, Malcolm is going to send them a message today, because we just received that message yesterday, an email, and said, we're not quite done. He wouldn't have it done by, you know, today to get it to Planning Commission to review. And so he's asking him if he can have it done by next week, so we could get it to review and Planning Commission, and have it be on that nineteenth meeting. Okay. Um, and also too, so on tomorrow, or next week's Planning Commission, is the, the approval of the recommendations of that subdivision ordinance that we've been working on. You know, we had those two meetings. I know Amanda has met once with Jared and with Malcolm for quite some time. She met again with Malcolm. They've sent all of what changes, all those things we had. And so that is going to be approved at next Planning Commission meeting, next. And so that is going to be approved at next planning commission meeting next week. We have to have that done by December thirty-first. And so we're, we will plan on us, you know, you as city council approving that on November, on December nineteenth. Because that has to be done by December thirty-first. So it goes into effect. So any questions on those things? Um, the fee schedule, we've been waiting on just a few things. Planning commission had some things they were reviewing. It's been tabled a few times, so we're going to plan on working on the fee schedule in January. I know that was something you've been asking about, but we've been waiting on that little, little piece. But I think we're going to go ahead and just do it and have it ready to go in January. So we can talk about that. And then also we'll be talking about, like I said, in January, I want to get started on the budget. We have some, a new proposal as far as the sheriff contract going up. And so I think, you know, they've already sent this. They probably won't know. They're going to try to have that to us in January. But in January, I think would be a good time for us to start on the budget. You know, this workshop I was attending said we really should be reviewing our budget every month just to making sure we're right on track with what we think, if there's changes. So we don't get to the end of the year and have a bunch of amendments that we're trying to make.
Yeah, we used to.
We used to get the little thing every month.
Yeah.
And that disappeared.
Yeah. So anyway, that's something that we, um, need to work on. The only other thing, and I was, and I was, well, a couple of things. I was gonna ask you, Debbie, if you would want to maybe help me on this. So, um, which I think this is a really good idea. Amanda has recommended that we have a policy and procedure manual for planning commission. So she kind of put one together that I thought if you would want to help me work on it maybe, and then we'll bring it to city council and have you review it, have the attorneys review it before, because it's not necessarily a code or a zone. It's just a, like a policy and procedure manual. But would you be willing to work on that with me? We could go through it and then bring it here and have everybody discuss it and. Okay, the other thing, I'm worried we're out of time so we can get that hurt. Um, be thinking because in first of January, city council assignments, which we'll talk about, but, um, Sidney Cox's term will be up. And so I received this saying what our next meeting was, and so then we'll need to appoint someone for that. So, okay, I think that's everything. That's a big stack of stuff. I know. I tried to be as organized as I could so we could get through it. Hey, thank you for all of that.
Keep forgetting I have to walk. It's like we're sitting down and.
It's hard to stand up.
Debbie, is it your hip, your knee, your back?
It's my back. They decided that was the culprit.
It also has to be notarized too, so.
Good, how are you doing? Ready for this?
Oh, well, we do. This is a annual conflict of interest. So do we, because it did just say. So I, I thought it was maybe something that we have to sign.
I'll, I'll figure it out. I think you'd get a clip out of it.
What is your problem? Realize yourself, it's a hip or? Or your back?
Yeah, he said my hips.
Hopefully before there's any more damage. Morgan, you cut your hair. Oh.
Hello, Taylor. Thanks for coming.
It is Brian.
Brian? Okay, he's the youngest. He's a good kid. Yeah, good kid.
And I think the other one's last name is Roberts.
His last name, Roberts?
Well, thinking, I'm looking at the boys and seeing which ones I think is the, one of the ones that's there. They're, they're just new under our group. They came up from the pack.
Well, Robert, Robert was your first name.
Roberts is the last.
We're going to go ahead and start our city council meeting tonight. Our TV is having a hard time pulling up things, so we do the best we can with the technology that we have. Tonight is December fifth, twenty twenty-four, and we appreciate you coming tonight, especially with the foggy weather conditions that we have. We are going to go ahead and have our pledge of allegiance by council member Wilcox and then our reverence will be by council member Fowers.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, or in which it stands, and of its love, with its wisdom and justice throughout. Our heavenly Father, we're always grateful to be able to come before the impertinent and give you thanks for our lives here upon this earth and the blessings that we have in our lives. We're grateful this night for all those in attendance, whether they're here or whether they're able to listen to this meeting afterwards. We're grateful for the interests that we have in those who live in this city, Hooper. We pray, heavenly Father, that as we have this council meeting tonight, that influences might be upon us, that we will be able to have a clarity of thought and be able to express ourselves and be able to respond to the needs and, and those desires in our city that will help it to be a better place to live. We pray for those who will be traveling with the weather conditions the way they are, that they might be watched over, protected, that they'll be safe and have a sense of driving or whatever it is they're doing to be careful with the foggy conditions the way they are. Again, we're grateful to be able to live in a country where we can enjoy the freedoms that we have. And we pray that we'll never abuse or take for granted the freedoms that we have by living in this land. And these things we pray for and thank you for in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. So a couple of upcoming events that we have this coming Monday, December the ninth, Santa Claus is coming to Hooper. And he is going to be here at the civic center. He is bringing his farm animals and his family and we'll have a treat for the kids. And this will be from six o'clock until seven thirty, so coming up on this Monday. Also wanted to remind you, we are still in the need of a crossing guard. We have one of our public works, um, employees that has been filling in for that. He says it's really quite fun with the kids, but he doesn't want that to be his permanent job. So we're trading up with, currently with West Haven, they do one week and then we do one week. So if you know of anybody that might be interested in that, if you would direct them to West Haven City to apply for that. It is over there at thirty-five seventy-five south, fifty-one hundred west for the new elementary. And you know, if they agree to do it, there is the morning time and then after school and then, you know, also on one street that's a short date. Yeah. Yes. And I can't think of anything else upcoming. So the first thing then is a consent and approval of the minutes, because everyone had a chance to review those minutes. I, I had a couple of things. One of them was, and I already mentioned this already to Morgan and Brandon, wasn't able to join us by Zoom last time. And so we could take that off. There was a couple of just spellings of names, but that's I can give you after, like, Portman's last name and some of the other names. That was the only thing I could see. Did anybody see anything as far as? Yeah, yeah, that's the only thing that I had noticed. Spelling's coming. Anybody have anything that they saw, is it correct? And I, like you say, I can go through you because for instance, it's Dan Borwood, it's, anyway. But I can get with you of those different spellings and those things. Okay, so there's not any discussion? Is there someone that would like to make a, a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, with those corrections that they mentioned.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Fowers. It was seconded by council member Hill. Any discussion on the motion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, so the first thing we have is a report on the fifty-five hundred west project. And we're happy to have Taylor Stockford, here who is our city engineer with J D V. So, but did you say it doesn't, it doesn't show?
I did print out some papers, so I was gonna pass those around.
Okay.
Now if you guys see it. Uh, I don't know if I have it, but I need to share it.
Okay, yeah, we need to share.
Okay. Yeah, so the good news about the fifty-five hundred west project, um, according to our, uh, budget, money spent, ninety-nine percent of the project is complete. The only things that are, excuse me, that are remaining to be done are mostly like landscaping and sprinklers. That just doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to do in December, so contractor will come back in the spring and finish that stuff up. And some fencing is being done this December as well, so we're, we're basically done with it now. Um, I'll point you to that top table at first, um, just to tell you the, the, where the funds first came from. So the top line, the five point four million dollars, um, is categorized as the sales tax. Second line, the corridor preservation and then the local matches, the, um, money that Hooper contributes. The sales tax is, um, to be used for construction and engineering. And the corridor preservation, that's to be used for public involvement, right away acquisition, thirty percent design, preliminary survey. So, I mean, that, the corridor preservation fund, it was used completely, um, just so, just for your permission. That was done preliminarily. So in total, we have six point one million dollars to complete the project. If you look at the second table, um, you can, you can see that with construction and engineering's, um, spent, we had six point one million dollars. There was, um, there was change orders that went into increasing the original cost. We had some delays, um, because of some certain utilities that made the project continue on for another construction season. That continuation co, inc, caused, uh, increase in the construction costs, so that's in there. And then also kind of since the construction went for another season, that also included, um, on the part of construction inspection, that was also increased, so. So then if you take that top six point one minus the five point four that was awarded and with the match that Hooper City already committed to using the three hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-six thousand, we still have an overage of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So I mean, adding those two numbers together, together, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars that, um, Hooker, Hooper is on the hook for. But then if you look at the last table, um, the good news or the bright side of this is the deferred improvements that happened along fifty-five hundred west from subdivisions, um, happening. We sum those up because there's, there's about eight, well, there's seven individual homeowners, but then there's the large silver saddle subdivision that contribute, uh, deferred their improvements in escrow for over three hundred thousand dollars. So adding those all together, the city can be receiving four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to use for the cost of improvements on fifty-five hundred west. And then that last line there talking about the Rocky Mountain power claim, um, with the delay, there's a lot of delays in the beginning of the project that, um, we feel were caused by Rocky Mountain powers, uh, inaction. I guess I'd say that. And we are hoping to make a claim against Rocky Mountain power for those liquidated damages, which we're working on right now, but that would be a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, but we're able to track. So with those two sources of not income but positive, that gives you five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So my rough numbers of the seven hundred thousand minus the five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we're looking at over two hundred thousand dollars that the city, the upper city is on the hook for. Which is kind of part of that, where that local match even came from in the first place, so. Bright side of the things, it looks like we are still kind of in that ballpark of what our local match was. Hopefully that was clear. Is there any questions you guys have?
Yes, okay, so, I have a question. So, so we owe five, you said we owe five hundred thousand. So our local matches, so we owe another two hundred thousand? Is that what you?
So part of the grant we committed to three hundred and twenty-six thousand. And then we went, we got overages, um, because of change orders and these other things, that's an additional three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So that's seven, about seven hundred thousand that we owe. So, that's seven, about seven hundred thousand that we owe.
Bet you take off this five sixty, but the one forty-six of Rocky Mountain is maybe.
Is a very big maybe, yes. The escrows are a lot, the escrows are really already paid for, right? They're just need to be collected.
So, I do have a question, like on the overages, I get things changed during construction and unforeseen things. In fact, I know a few people that have, some things happen to them there. But what's the process of, you know? Obviously, Rocky Mountain, their inactivity kind of snowballed everything, in my opinion. Even though, you know, it's just not a small thing, it impacted everybody. So, I don't know if that number is.
So.
But what's the process of the change order, is it legit, is Jared look at it?
Yes, it's, uh, it's always included with Jared. I mean, I'll tell you kind of how the process works. I mean, we have bi-weekly construction meetings there. We have Jared and some city staff, with the J U B staff and the contractors there. Issues arise during construction, they always do. And then there's, if there's something that needs to be changed, if there's a proposal from the contractor, and, I mean, if it is something small, like a couple thousand dollars, I mean, it's just a lot, it's a lot easier and actually saves money just to say, yes, that's something, I mean, with Jared's approval, we say that's something that's kind of can go forward. If it's a big one, we usually make a whole change order request. And we review the proposed price, and we negotiate with the contractor, and it gets signatures and it's documented. And then it gets executed into the contract amount.
How much J U B's, is this amount, how much extra did you guys bill up?
I can tell you for, this is after thirty percent design, but that's seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars was part of design, project management and construction inspection.
So, I mean, because you have, I guess what I'm asking is, on these overages, because you obviously go through the change order process and you, it requires more work on your behalf as well.
Yeah.
So, I, that's what I'm asking is, above and beyond the original contract, how much do you charge us?
I have a number here, I just want, I wrote down twenty-one thousand dollars above, like an engineering overages. I hope that's numbers right, I, yeah, that's what I'll say is twenty-one thousand.
That's what I thought, actually.
Yeah. I'll, I'll say this, there's change orders, which was three hundred thirty-six thousand, liquidated damages, so a hundred forty-six thousand of that was in liquidated damages. And then I just wrote, I wrote down twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand in engineering overages.
So, the, those liquidated damages, that's Rocky Mountain, right?
Yes.
So, how confident are you that you think when you get that, is there precedent?
That's part, comes, turns to the city attorney a little bit. I do believe that there, I believe we'll get some. I'm sure they'll try to negotiate with us and we may have to settle for a little bit less than that. But I think it's pretty well documented, this art attempted, uh, our multiple attempts to communicate with them and to get them to respond, and there's nothing there. So, we have plenty of documentation to kind of show that.
I, I would think our franchise agreement that we signed just prior to this with Rocky Mountain will be real supportive in the city's favor. You know, we, we just worked through that and updated everything, and they were anxious to get that updated. And, and fortunately, that was all completed before this project started. So, I, I, you know, I would see, I feel pretty positive about that, if we use that document to help support what our claim is.
Yeah, I mean, in that franchise agreement, it says, you know, they'll get their utilities relocated in a timely manner. I don't think anyone could say like, I think it was eighteen months was a timely manner.
I know that Brandon is currently working on this and as we've discussed it, and as it says, Rocky Mountain power claim versus suing, because Hooper City certainly does not have the resources that Rocky Mountain Power does as far as finances. So, it's not a lawsuit, it's like, they need to probably better understand that, read that, well, you could better explain it. I mean, I know you understand it, but that's what Brandon said, it's more of a claim.
Well, if they'll settle without a lawsuit, then it's a claim, if they won't, then it's a lawsuit.
Yeah.
They just flip the switch on the track, personally. That's what they'll do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is a big project, I mean, the grant paid for ninety-six, ninety-four percent of it. So, I mean, there is some money that's coming out of the city's pocket, but very small percentage of it. And I'll just also say at the end, like fifty-five hundred West is a priority for the city and we have some grant money to do some work on the south portion. And we're applying for grants to do the, some of the parts on the middle portion. That grant application goes in next week, so we're working hard to get the money to get that roadway approved.
Any other questions for Taylor? Thank you. Okay. So, the next thing, I'm okay, do you need to be jumped up? Okay. Okay, so the next thing then is we have a public hearing from, this is a Hooper City property purchase located at approximately fifty-nine hundred West and fifty-five hundred South. And this is going to be a public hearing. I don't know if there's discussions from the council before you would like to move that into a public hearing or if you would like to just move directly. Is, is there any questions, discussion from the city council? Okay, then I need to have a motion to move from our regular meeting into a public hearing.
Make that motion.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second was made by Councilmember Wilcox. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are moving into the public hearing section of our meeting then, and residents can come up or anyone else. You have three minutes, if you would like to come up. We ask that you come up to the microphone and state your name. Anybody wanting to make?
Thanks, every. So, we're selling property, it looks like, to Alice Karas and Associates, but I thought we had something in our ordinances, whether it be real property or equipment, that we post that so that other people can, um, either if they have an interest in it, so they can look at purchasing that. Is that not how we do real property or per- or land? I don't know.
So, that was the purpose of having the public hearing, but it's a little bit different circumstance. It's not that we are necessarily putting this property out for sale because we're trying to sell it. It is because in order to line up the road with the Utah, UDOT requirement. And if the map would show it, it doesn't, but we certainly have a map here.
I have a little better one.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's just because UDOT and our ordinance as well.
It's that little sliver there, so we can, you got to let us come in here or they want us to come in either a road down here or here, so to, so to get in. I'm gonna propose to buy back that little, buy that piece from the, and deed it back to him in the road.
Oh, all right, so it's, that's just south of that sewer station.
Yeah.
Yeah, just north. It's between the sewer station and the house. And the only reason for that is to allow for that road to line up straight across, not really.
Now, like, everybody likes to look at a, a sewer.
That answers that.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, seen, I, any others then? Could I have a motion to move from the public hearing back to our regular meeting?
So moved.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second? Okay, second was made by Councilmember Marigoni, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so now we're back to the regular meeting, so we'll have you come up and you can present and talk about it, and then the council can discuss it.
Well, we're still trying to maneuver this around so Brent can keep some of these buildings, but the key to it is, is, and then we talked about, when we had the, when I came before you and talked about just some of the requirements, we were able to work out the twenty foot and the twenty foot setback for the two buildings. Part of this, I want to be a little, I would like to have the option of being a little bit flexible because we don't have a final design from your engineers and my engineers and of course, UDOT's gonna want to put their two bits in. So, what I propose is we, a lot of times in this situation, so we come up with a dollar per foot by an appraisal. And then if we need to move it back forth just a little bit, just as long as it doesn't interfere with, obviously, with your buildings. But I could buy that from you and then deed it back to you in the road so that we can get access to that, that section of the ground. And that'll help in the future with the roads that I stub back and forth to the east and to the north and to the south. But that, if that, when and if that develops, that you'll have a better traffic pattern. We just can't, just don't want to spend a whole bunch of money designing until I, and get, get our good friends at J U B on board, so.
Questions, just?
So, how big is the piece that you're asking for?
It, it appears to me that it's about a, the maximum, I think, would be about fifteen by a hundred and twenty. So, what is that?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet by a hundred and twenty feet. It may be sixteen feet. It may be twenty feet. So, let's say twenty feet by, by a hundred, a hundred and twenty, which would be, uh, two thousand four hundred feet. So, it's not a lot of ground, it's just enough to make that fifty-seven come across. And we do have enough room between, luckily, we have enough room between Brent's house, your lift station, vacuum station, to put the road and have twenty feet offset.
What's underneath that twenty feet?
When we walked over, we'll have to do a little investigation there too, but when I took Darren Poore and Jared over there, as they looked at it on the ground, there was nothing that would affect any manholes or anything that are there. Of course, a manhole can be on a road because we have them all the time. But we didn't see anything that would affect any of that. So, based off of that, with, what we look at and what preliminary we've been able to do, we think we're okay. Obviously, that's why I'd like to make it subject to us getting to a final point, so we know exactly what we gotta do to meet everybody's rules. Because we gotta deal with the good old state of Utah and UDOT.
So, are there, are there no utilities underneath it then, or?
To our knowledge, there's not. To our knowledge, there's not.
So, I got the G I S right here, and all the utilities just come straight out the front side of it, not the back side of it.
Unless there's something that Jared, Darren, Jared and Darren were unaware, and I think, I can't remember who it was, you, did you go over with this? I can't remember.
He wasn't there.
He wasn't there, okay. There were three or four of us that went over and we walked it and said, well, this is his, this is here, this is, and they actually liked it because that gave them a little better access to the back of that property.
And somebody's doing the legal description, I presume, for it?
Yeah, well, I think when we get a final plat done, then we can create that legal description and come back. And that's why I suggest that we get a price per square foot. And so, if I don't need as much, it'll be less, if I need a little bit more. Unless the city has a desire for me to do something a little different, which we haven't had those meetings yet, that's why I'd like a little bit of flexibility. We, I, I want to get this kind of an agreement that we'll buy, that I will buy and sell, and then we can work on getting the rest of the subdivision to where Brent's happy, you're happy, I'm happy, and the state of Utah is happy, UDOT. Does that make sense?
Any other questions? I, I had asked Jared ahead of time, and I'll, I'll give you this copy, he just gave this to me tonight, right, when he was walking out, of just some things, and it's pretty much what he said, that he would just want to meet with you, you know, the city engineer, the public works director, sewer department, just to make sure if there was anything that needed you to move, determine the exact square footage, and then there would be an unbiased third party that would do an appraisal, you know, as far as that would be. And then, of course, our legal, um, our lawyer would prepare an agreement. And then he just said, any of your all project or infrastructure expenses, we would just know that you would.
That I'd be responsible for that, yeah.
Yes.
And, and we talked a little bit in the meeting prior, that if there was some fencing that you wanted around your lift, your pump station, what do you call them, lift, pump, vacuum stations, vacuum stations? If there's some fencing or something you wanted there, we would accommodate that, just like normal.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Alan on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so further discussion then amongst the council on this?
Sounds like we should approve the sale and then finalize the details later.
Yes, that's right.
You know, like, what Jared recommended, we'd probably include that, the details, if we just agreed to sell it.
Give us a chance to look for the unknown.
Sure.
There'll have to be an agreement that it's still.
Yes.
What was that, I didn't read that.
There'll have to be an agreement, and then there'll also have to be a deed, deed in there, of course.
Yeah.
So, tonight then the motion would be made to sell the property. And then, like you said, with these considerations, I think it should be included, price, like you said. And then also, like, since there, there's going to have to be this legal agreement and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion? So, is there someone then that would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I don't mind making a motion to agree to sell Hooper City property located at fifty-nine hundred West and fifty-seven hundred South. I don't know exactly how to make the motion, as I mentioned earlier, on these conditions.
So, I think you authorize, be authorized the sale, and then we finalize when the agreements are signed. And of course, it's all contingent on this development going through, you don't want to sell it unless the development.
Yeah, no, I don't think you want to that, and I don't think I want to, I'm a little stripper round there.
So, I would make that, you know, make that motion based on what Regis explained to us.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Fowers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second was made by Councilmember Wilcox, all in, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize that I can't give you exact, we just have so many moving parts that we need to nail, nail down, so. Because when we talked before, you wanted me to bring a legal description, but it's kind of like, we gotta get everybody's input before we can get to the legal description. So, we'll, we'll move forward with, with some design and then, and then get, come back to you with the rest of it. Do we, do we need to sign something?
Yeah, once you have the details worked out, let's pull.
We'll do that at that time, we don't need to do something now, or it's just?
Prepare it so you have the, so you have all the details.
Tell it, okay. So, this, this would give me assurance that I could move forward and spend thousands and thousands of dollars to get approval set, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank, thank you for your time.
Okay, then the next thing on our agenda is the motion approval of commercial business license for the fry-buy food truck, and this is Chris Jordinson. So, Chris, if you want to come up and you can explain a little bit about this, you have a copy of that in your, in the packet.
Okay, so we have, we've been in this space for about fifteen years now. And we've primarily only participated in special events, so, you know, Division One football, you know, rodeos, country music festivals, things of that nature. But, you know, with, with it being seasonal, you know, your, your opportunity to, you know, have income is seasonal as well. And so, um, you know, my, my kids are getting older and, and things are changing at home, and, and so, we've made the decision to operate year-round, which changes our license. round, which changes our licensing, what the state of Utah and the things that we need to do to make that happen. So I have, you know, the, the necessary environmental health permits, the fire department permits, you know, everything that I need, that I've carried for, you know, years and years and years. But the, the last step to be able to operate annually in the state of Utah is to have a business license in the city that I reside in, so that's my purpose here tonight. And I'm certainly open to answering questions that you all may have, and just ask for your consideration.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Where you're frying.
Yeah, so we, our core menu is burgers and fresh cut fries, so I bring in, you know, fresh potatoes, and I have machines in my truck that I slice them with, they go right to the fryers, it's not the, the frozen stuff that maybe you get somewhere else. But that's been our, that's been our staple. When, when I started this whole wild thing back in 2009, I actually was doing this in Dutch ovens, and it just, you know, grew exponentially, and I couldn't, I couldn't manage it effectively with, I'd need 50 or 60 Dutch ovens to try and, you know, keep up and, and keep my commitments, so, you know, over time, I, I just kept reinvesting. About 2015, I built, I had a company up in Idaho building a, it's a trailer, actually, is what it is, it's a fully self-contained trailer, because we traveled from, I'll go from Boise to Phoenix and Elko to Verma, you know, all these different events that we do. And so I needed capacity for, you know, water and propane, you know, your sewage, you know, and be able to, to sustain that for, you know, eight or nine days. And so, so I did that, and, yeah, that's, that's kind of a short of the, the, this story, we, I was a product of the, the 2008, you know, job crisis, and that's kind of how this all came about for me. I thought if I could, you know, I guess make money, right, doing something I enjoyed, then that would've been the, the perfect thing, and, so anyway, yeah, that's, that's kind of how we, that's kind of how we got started.
So you just, you don't have a permanent location at your house where you're selling all the time, it's always moving places?
I do not. Correct, yeah, I, I'm just, so, we, you know, we've done work up at Utah State University for their home football games, I've worked with the, the Letterman family, and there are different organizations, you know, through baseball and basketball, and they had the raceway out in Tewa. Worked with some different organizations out in Verma, they have one of the top rodeos in the country, you know, every June, July, and we've been fortunate enough to be a part of that for, for many years. So we've, we've done some neat things, we've got to probably do some things that we typically wouldn't be able to do, you know, if we don't have this opportunity. It's a, sorry, excuse me, it's a, you know, it's also taught my kids how to work, which is important, and hopefully, you know, teach them the value of the dollar, you know, and some, some life lessons that they can carry with them in whatever they do, so.
You know, I, I have a question on like their food truck type operation, where the, your license is issued out of Hooper City, what is your sales tax called? Does it come back to where Hoover gives you the permit, or?
That's a great question. It, it goes to the state of Utah, but I don't know if that funnels back to Weber County or Hooper City, I'm not sure how it's, how it's distributed. I file a Schedule C on my, on my taxes every year, and so it's just considered, you know, part of my annual income, but I, I don't know where it funnels back to, or, you know, if, if I need to write a check to, to Hooper City, that's fine, you know, if, if, but I, but I haven't been informed with that by the task commission.
Sure. Well, I'm sure that, that'd be identified, you know, when you, when you sell something, part of that is, a sales tax is part of the sale, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
So, yeah, I think it would be just like, you know, ordering things, whether it's through Amazon or wherever that address is placed, you know, where, where that item's going, and the sale taxes, sales taxes paid, that's the city, the location that gets to pay credit for that, and so I would hope that some way Hooper City could.
Benefit from.
They could give a little credit from all your efforts.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, I, I would agree with that, yeah, and, and I can look into that.
Sure.
You know, I'm happy to do that.
When you pay sales tax, do you tell them where your truck was located when you collected the sales tax, or do you just pay it all from your business location?
Yeah, so I, I can only speak to special events, so if I was in Brigham City at Beach Days, for example, in the fall, when, when you pull a, an environmental health permit with the health department for a special event, you're also issued a temporary business license, it's, it's a combo, if you will. And so with special events, I would then, again, I, I'd get a slip in the mail for that particular event, you know, and Brigham City, Chamber of Commerce is listed, you know, as the host city, you know, the event and all those things, but I would still write the check or, you know, electronic transmission to the state of Utah. And, and that's, again, I don't know if they release from there, if they fund money back to Brigham City, for example, or West Haven, or Hooper, you know, wherever I'm doing business, I'm just not sure where that money goes, or if it stays with the state. This side is a new venture for me, and so I, I, I would like to see money come back to, to Hooper, you know, form the taxes, but I don't, I don't know the, the answer to that question, I don't know where it would go.
Any other questions? This could just be mostly from Morgan, there's just a little contradiction on the email down the bottom after it says on section three, it says the Fry Guy, and up on the top on section one, this is the Fry Guy, so just I'm gonna check that white out, so it's the same email. And that's my application, using?
Yes, yes. I'm sure it was just like quick typing, so.
So Chris, how does your business model change now with this new, versus what you were doing before?
It just provides more opportunity. The model itself won't change, you know, we'll still do everything now that we were doing before in terms of, you know, what we, what we, what we make and what we sell, but it'll give me the opportunity to work every day or every weekend, no, but annually, as opposed to just at special events. There's, there's, so, so Weber County offers a, they call it a seasonal event permit, so I could, I could obtain a seasonal permit from Weber County, but again, it's only good for six months. And then I have to wait, you know, until that following year to, to pull another one of those again, so this just allows me to, to, to. Do it all year long, correct, yeah.
So I'll make the motion that we approve the commercial business license for the Fry Guy food truck from Chris Jordinson.
I'll second. Motion was made by Councilmember Hill, it was seconded by Councilmember Marigoldy, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
That's what you said, we'd like you to have a part in that.
That's right, hope you're tomorrow.
Can he come to the Santa? I'm telling you, I've had him, but you should stay at football, so.
Yeah, I had him, I lost those where I got.
Yeah, we're neighbors.
Yeah. Okay, the next thing then on our agenda is the discussion, the motion on the senior lunch, this was tabled last time, so remember, we discussed that, the, so Weber Human Services is trying to establish four sites to have their senior facilities, and one of those will be Washington Terrace, that combines with South Ogden, North Ogden, that combines with Pleasant View, Ogden City, and so this is, was, they are asking Hooper City, West Haven, and Roy City to each contribute $4,000 towards this fund in order for the Roy to be one of the other ones in consideration. And so we need to decide, so this would be a 4,000 annual expense for this, and then there's also the expense, and we, we already talked about this last time, which was one that I think everyone, it's not like approved of, but it was $19,080 a year for to do the one lunch a month, this is, that even though the seniors need twice a year, that we have enough donations to cover the one time, thank you, and then there's a $4 suggested donation from the seniors that come, so it would be a total of $5,980 that would be, and it would have to be an amendment to the budget because there, we do not currently have a line item for that amount. So discussions are missed in.
So when the donations that we currently have received run out, next year, for example, we're gonna have to increase this amount again?
And for our individual or continue to try to get donations. So far, the two individuals, Larry Cottle and Chris Morris, that have been spearheading this and have done just an excellent job, they've gone out and gotten enough donations to cover the one week, and enough, if we pay $11, and that's what that $1980 is, then they pay the four, but yes, that's correct. So this would be a year-to-year ongoing, that Hooper is no longer in consideration to have received any funding at all, and it is because they have a grant from the federal government that is, and I don't remember the acronym, but it is the, no, I can't, I don't, I, anyway, it's a grant, and it has to do with the older Americans Disability Act, it's like, I, I don't remember the exact name of it, that they receive so much funding, but in order to do that, you have to, we would've had to have had a dinner, and we would've had to have had an organized activity every time, which was something that we didn't have the manpower to pay to have someone come do that, and so we're, we're no longer in consideration. So that's why we went ahead and said, well, we would pay for once a month if we get donations for the other time a month, and then the additional is this 4,000 that would be going to help to keep the Roy Center. And as we talked about last time, we do have quite a few of our residents, the Roy Center is open Monday through Friday, and they also do have an activity, so they can go up there every day, and currently, from the numbers they have, we have eight Hooper residents that are, excuse me, 19 Hooper residents that are going to the Golden Hours, which is in Ogden, two that go to the Nor, the North View, and we have 28 that are going to Roy, and one that are going to Washington Terrace. Do we have friends there?
Fifty, 58 residents.
58 residents that are attending, but it could be.
Those that wasn't coming here.
Yes, but some of those, because when I had mentioned before that we weren't, some of them that were coming to ours said, oh, I vote to Roy, so I don't know that that's entirely 58 different ones, and maybe, and they said sometimes, you know, maybe they go with another family member or someone else, and so I, I can't say for certain, and they didn't give me names, of course, but I can't say that that did or not, some of the same ones that are coming. I know some of them aren't, because from talking to the seniors on Wednesdays, some of them don't want to drive people, and we've had really good meals, and we had probably 10 to 12 coming, don't you think?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I put in the budget upwards to 15, just to make sure that we, you know, we have enough in the budget to cover if by chance there were, there were 15, because now the food's really good. Wasn't maybe always the best in the past, but.
So it's, so like, like Kate and Gail, that was just the one time they had?
So no, they, they are, are who are providing the meals. So we have Kate and Gail Simpson from Hooper that are the ones that are, and so, yeah, so we pay $11 a meal. One Wednesday a month, and then the seniors, and I relate, I think every senior brings in $4, we don't.
So the box is pretty full.
The box is pretty full.
So what, what is a usual meal like? I mean, the, you're getting.
So last time, it was really good, it was turkey, mashed potatoes and gravy, there was a roll, there was a vegetable, like I believe there was a salad, there was a dessert. If you, on the way out, I didn't bring it in, but there is a menu on the door, because the seniors like to know what their menu is going to be, and so we post a menu on the door now that tells, I know they had a gingerbread just some kind, I wasn't here yesterday to see what the meal was. It's yummy. Whatever they have, their food has been really good, I know one time they had chili, and then it had cornbread, I know there's always a dessert, I can't remember what else they had, chili, but there's usually, it's usually a pretty full course meal that they bring for the seniors, so, yeah. I don't know, I mentioned before in, in our work meeting, I, I feel like this is minimum, that we're contributing towards our seniors, if it's the $5,980, I think it's something worthwhile, I know that if we decide to do this, we would be signing an interlocal agreement with us and West Haven and Roy, and that interlocal agreement would say that we are supporting the Roy Senior Center.
I just wish more people would take advantage of it, because we got 12 that come here and 28 go to Roy, I mean, we're only benefiting 40 residents of our entire city with this program. It's like, it, it's almost not.
Yes, it is, you know, I'm aware of that.
It's a, it's a, yeah, I don't know.
Well, that was one thing that Larry and Chris talked about, you know, I know they have, I've seen some signs, and they talked about advertising it better, saying that's always something that we can do, but then.
Newsletter.
Yeah, newsletter, where there's a newsletter that was going to go out in January, and so we could always advertise better, and, yeah, the text might go, you mentioned that, I know I have, have you.
That would probably lower the budget a bit, huh?
Yeah.
Yes, it would.
Well, you know, over the years, I've watched the people come and go, we've had a lot that used to come that are now deceased, that are no longer coming. We do have one that's still coming in her 90s that comes, and she's one that doesn't feel comfortable driving to Roy. West Haven, they do their, they call it their senior lunch, lunch, and they do theirs once a month, and the city totally pays for it, I think they maybe ask for, actually, maybe I'm misspeaking, I think they maybe ask for a volunteer contribution to, but they also have the one West Haven that won't, don't want to drive to Roy either, so. But we do need to give an answer back to the Roy mayor, he, you know, sent me another message and I received one from him and from West Haven, and that's when West Haven mentioned about the interlocal agreement.
Have we, have we talked to Kami? See like if it's something that's applicable to?
She hasn't specifically said where the money would come from, that's something that we're gonna be talking about next, when we talk about the emergency preparedness fund, you know, the budget is tentative, and so there always is money that goes into our general fund, so I, from looking at our budget, I think that we will be able to amend the budget and find that 4,000 and then 19, well, the $5,980. But yes, again, we will have to amend the budget, and that money would then be designated, there's always money that we haven't specifically designated, that says, say like general fund or capital project, but we, but yes, we will have to amend the budget for this. Thank you. Well, I would personally rather put a little more in for the monthly one if we're gonna do this, so we aren't have, so we don't need to keep amending this if we have more people showing up, because this is paying for the bare minimum of people coming, and if we have more start coming, which they are, because when we first started talking about this, we had eight, now we have 12 that came.
Um, I, I, I just don't like to have the need to keep amending the budget. Yeah, but I don't know, I don't really know.
Yeah, and that was just very, you know, I did it for a year, but yeah, you're, you're right. I think, I think if we decide to do that, I think it wouldn't be a, I think that's a good idea.
I think we do it for a year and just see how it goes. I mean, we can always change it or cancel it a year from now. And depending on the feedback and the participation we see from it. I mean, oh, it's not, it's not tying us into the long contract, it's one year.
Or by then try to find other, other sponsors or other people that would.
Interesting, I can not fly, Ryan. I'm telling you that, it's just, it's a silly thing. Not that the seniors are pesky flyers, it's just this topic, for the last three or four months.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So I wonder on conditions too, along that saying, no, as long as West Haven and Roy give them money, then we'd be willing, if they're not, then.
We can't confirm it.
Well, if they don't, if, if we don't have to, I mean, if, if this is an alibi, let us do it or it's not going to work. Roy City Council already approved it. I didn't call the city, well, okay, I don't, I don't know that West Haven, this is what the mayor, West Haven told me, that the city manager was drafting an interlocal agreement. And he said when that was done, that they would send that to us, and I haven't seen that yet. So it sounded like West Haven was going to as well. But I don't know that their city council has approved that yet or not, because they ended up not having a city council meeting last night, but he said they were drafting an interlocal agreement, and Roy has approved it. So if they don't, if West Haven doesn't, then we don't do it either. But if we approve that, we do, and we tell them, and they do then. But yeah, I think you're right, Ryan. I think it would be good if we could approve for a year, um, and then we could go from there.
And really tracking current residents to go to the Roy Center, because it's the fixed cost regardless of how many people use it.
Yes.
For more, the better, truly.
Well, that was one thing I maybe mentioned before. At one time when they came and told the seniors that they were no longer doing this, we even, and they talked about this bus, that there might even be a van. So they talked to them, and then they came back and said, well, no, the vans really are only to deliver meals on wheels, and so people are housebound and can't come. Well, they, they want to come. That's the part of it, they like the social atmosphere.
That's the sociability.
It really is. So it's huge. They just don't necessarily want to be home and have this meal delivered to them. They want to come here, because even when we first said we weren't going to, they asked, well, can we still use your room? And we're still going to come. And they did. One time they brought pizza, didn't they?
They brought their own food.
They brought their own food. We are sure we can't stop.
Do we all, do we have an idea how many people receive meals on those?
I, I don't know that, no.
'Cause that is a benefit from when we were human services, it's not a percent compensated.
I used to see them all the time, I don't feel me.
I saw one last year, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know on that.
Well, we've, we've talked about this for quite a while now. You know, I would just like to see something kind of written out, that this is what the proposal is. You know, we actually, we actually know, because prices have changed. That we know what we're obligating ourselves to, and it's, it's in writing, you know? We say, okay, this is, this is what we're approving.
Yeah, so what we would be approving tonight would be four thousand dollars to do this interlocal agreement. And then those numbers, and again, I based those on fifteen, that's, that is the, we haven't had fifteen yet. I think the most we've maybe had is twelve. So we said for fifteen, and that's one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. And so right today, the number is five thousand nine hundred and eighty. And then if we had more come than the fifteen, then again, we only have, if we've only approved that much, that's what we've approved, and then we get other people to donate more.
But how do they know how many to prepare for if they have no way to help me or company? You know, I mean.
I know, we have asked for them to.
I think they pre-sign up.
Yeah.
I think they've got a reserve of their spot.
Mm-hmm. Something.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we, we've asked them to do that. So we would know, because, and I, and there haven't been leftover meals. Sometimes there's a leftover dessert or two in the fridge, but I, they, 'cause I always ask them, oh, do they, do you get food while there haven't been leftover meals? It's not like our staff is eating a lot of leftover food, because they're not. Sometimes they'll have an extra dessert. Yeah.
So I'll make the motion, um, to approve the four thousand dollars paid to Roy City in an interlocal agreement with Roy City, West Haven and Hooper, as long as all three participate, that we pay the four thousand dollars and the nineteen hundred and eighty dollars to be used locally for our once-a-month, uh, meals here in Hooper. Um, for a one-year contract, yeah, or not a contract, a one-year agreement. Um, for, what calendar year do you think that, or is it fiscal year?
Yeah, well, so, so we didn't actually start it until October. I think as far as the four thousand, I don't, I thought their fiscal year was the same as ours. And then someone said, no, they thought they were calendar year.
Okay.
So I, I, I don't know on that, if it's a calendar year. But I, I just figured up a year amount, but like I say, we didn't start. But I was thinking if we even had it go through this budget season up till June thirtieth, then we talk about it again. So in July, when we do our, you know, I know we, we do our budget, we can be doing it again if, if we decide to, so.
So depending on the interlocal agreement set, this from West Haven will go along with that, whether it's fiscal or calendar year.
Yes. Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Hill. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second is made by Councilmember Northrup. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, um, and.
And again, my reason is I would like to see something written out. So we know what we're obligating, obligating ourselves to, because those numbers have changed every time we talk about it.
Yeah, well, the last time, and when we talked, we tabled it this time.
If anything other than the four thousand, we will have to.
We'll do it. No, yeah, and yeah, and that's been a number consistent for the last two years. Okay, and the four thousand.
The four thousand, I presume, will start when our program starts. It may not be fiscal year or calendar year. It may start in January or February, go through February next year.
Yeah, and on the nineteen eighty, if, if, we, we should be notified if we're getting close to that. I, you know, I, I would rather the council be notified rather than find out later. Yeah. That we're over. And I don't think this year we should, because like I said, I think that they didn't start until di- October, I think. And I figured a whole year, and we only have from October till the end of June, so we won't have a year. I, I was thinking this is for this rest of this budget year, is what I'm just thinking. I don't know about that, whether we approve it services, but you're right, Kevin.
So, so that's kind of my point. What we're discussing right now is just.
Well, the point thousand's always the same. The other nineteen eighty, we won't know, depend, it depends on how many people come. So we voted on the maps of the fifteen, but if there's only twelve, well, we still have money. It won't be that much in my head.
Well, again, the question is when does the four thousand start and stop?
Well, we will know that when we get a copy of the interlocal agreement. Okay, um, the next thing on the agenda then is a motion at the approval of funds for emergency preparedness. So. Discussion on that?
Any discussion? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I might add to it though, but go ahead.
Why don't, why don't you make it? Yeah, do you want to discuss it first then before, is there just discussion?
Well, I just want the budget to reflect what we discussed.
Right, sure.
And so, uh, I would like it retroactive to July, the start of this year's budget, July first, is when it should start.
And that's when it would, when they amend the budget, because our budget started July first, so it will be, so if you.
Because we can't go back, because we actually started like in October, but we can't.
No, we can't, no.
Kind of make it a little messy, so.
Yeah. This year's budget year from July first to June thirtieth, yes, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Did you want to make a motion?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we, thirty-five percent of the utility funds for the emergency preparedness program and make it retroactive to the beginning of this fiscal year. Okay?
And what I add, that's gonna carry over from year to year and not be swallowed up.
Yes, and to be carried over from year to year. Yes, and I'm sure that's something Kami can do, 'cause we also talked about doing that with our, like, our community events. You know, some years, Tomato Days has made money and it doesn't carry over. And we, there's some funds, and Kami said we can do that, 'cause we're, so I'm sure we could. Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Marigoni. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second is made by Councilmember Will Cox. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, just because I never approved utility tax to begin with. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick my position to the whole utility tax. By the way, I was gonna say.
Especially when we had.
Wouldn't be true.
Especially if you had to see where they were for so long.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, motion carries. That was my question, at least I brought up in work meeting, and two senators haven't shown up. But Mike Price brought up a good point. If we don't get the money, it's still five percent. And so may not be quite what we were hoping, but maybe it will. We don't know that yet. Okay, um, we are down then to public comments. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Seeing no public comments then, is there someone that made a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Hill. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second was made by Councilmember Fowler. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and motion is adjourned. Thank you. Thank everyone for coming. Okay, I see, Lisa, you're already doing one of these. Uh, Ray brought this new thing, did not see that, and he is asking that we get this, um, let me see if there's another.